Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the December. I'm jumping ahead of myself. Welcome to the February 27th meeting for the Glendale Elementary School District Governing Board. Please let the minute show. We have all five members present and accounted for. Ms. Sigata-Jones, are there any changes to the agenda this evening?
Good evening, President Martinez, members of the board. No, there are not.
All right. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll move to adopt the agenda.
Second?
Second.
Ms. Bartels, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Pimentel, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Harmio, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye, thank you. Please join me in a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Please rise. Okay, moving on to our special recognitions. Ms. Sigata-Jones, the Kiwanis Student of the Month, please.
Yes, President Martinez, members of board, I'll introduce our president for Kiwanis, Glenda Kiwanis, as Roger Coulter, if you'll come to the podium.
Cindy Sigata-Jones, GESD board members and staff, thank you all for having me here tonight. My name is Roger Coulter, the president of the Kiwanis Club of Glendale. Tonight, I am here to recognize the Kiwanis Club and Superintendent Student of the Month for February 2025. This award is special because a student has been chosen by the superintendent for her hard work, passion for helping others, and helping make our community a better place. It was great pride that we award Student of the Month Challenger School Seventh Grade Student Azira Sakaria. Azira? Come on up. Want to stand over here? All right, I'm gonna say some good things about you, okay? Is that all right?
Let's pronounce Azira.
Hmm?
Azira.
Azira, okay. Azira is truly an outstanding individual who excels in all areas of school life. With perfect attendance this year, she demonstrates dedication and commitment to her education. She has earned a place on the principal's honor roll for her academic achievements, including excel, excelling in algebra. Not only is she a scholar, but she also shines as an athlete actively participating in flag football, soccer, and softball. As a leader, Azira contributes to the school community by serving on the student council and assisting as a junior teacher for a third grade, third grade class. Her hard work, leadership, and positive attitude make her a role model for her peers. Thank you for all of us from the Glendale Club. So, I have a, a signed statement from you for your outstanding community work and a $50 gift card to Walmart.
Thank you.
So, thank you. Do you have anything, yeah, do you have anything to say? All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I see you have a Kit Kat, so I'm assuming he can have that? Here's for each of you. Thank you so much. Nice to see you again, too. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Great job, congratulations. So proud of you. Thank you so much. Appreciate you. Oh, also, Azira, one more thing. You get to choose from the treasure chest anything you'd like. Oh, sure, she's gonna get those. You're welcome. Thank you so much. So proud of you. Now, we will have, Roger will now do the Kiwanis School Award. It's our monthly school award. So, Roger.
Thank you. The Glendale Elementary School District and Kiwanis Club of Glendale have developed an award that recognizes the school and the district that demonstrates unwavering dedication to servant leadership and provides significant service to the community. This is the award. This award is, is, is the Commitment to Servant Leadership Award. Each month, a school in the district will be named the Inspiring Change School of the Month. The Kiwanis Inspiring Change School for this month, for the month of February, is Horizon School. Just wait here a second. I'm gonna say some good things about your school. The staff, students, and community of Horizon School have done a remarkable job of not only elevating academics and dual language at their school, but have increased the number of students in mosaic clubs and increased the number of each opportunities for their folklorical ensembles. Specifically, the Horizon Folklorical Ensembles have performed their, for their school site community many times throughout the year and for the larger community at Celebration of the Arps for the past couple of years. Their success has been palpable and has increased when they were asked to perform. Bear with me on this. This is gonna be a tongue twister. They were asked to perform for the Greater Phoenix Educational Management Council County Meeting, the Arizona School Board Association slash Arizona School Administrators Association Annual Conference, and the Arizona School Public Relations Association Awards Ceremonies, right? These opportunities have given the students the ability to see the fruits of their effort and to also engage the community in their outreach. Horizon School's staff, students, and families are consistently thinking of new and innovative ways to increase involvement to the point of engagement with their community. Horizon School inspires the school community to do its best. Thank you. That's a traveling trophy, so next month, someone else will do it. So, thank you.
Roger, now you know why in education we use acronyms.
I think so. I got that message.
All right. Thank you. Congratulations, Horizon. Congratulations to our Kiwanis Student of the Month. Moving on in our agenda, do we have any calls to the public this evening?
No, we do not, President Martinez.
Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
And I'll second.
Ms. Bartels, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Pimentel, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Harmio, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye, thank you. Moving on to reports and information items, our 2025 Benchmark II assessment results. Ms. Sigata-Jones?
Yes, President Martinez, members of the board. This evening, Dr. Jerry Peterson and Kurvaya is going to present the benchmarks. Unfortunately, Assistant Superintendent Norma Heidig, who usually presents, she's not with us this evening. She's, I'm sure she's listening. So, Norma, thank you for all your work. We appreciate it. With that, Dr. Jerry Peterson and Kurvaya.
Good evening, President Martinez, members of the boards, Superintendent Sigata-Jones, and Ms. Heidig, I hope I do you proud. I'm here to present the Benchmark II results for this school year. Benchmark II happened in December, so it was quite a bit ago. We're actually on the verge of Benchmark III in a week. So, we're getting down to the wire before our state testing as well. So, just a couple of things before we start to go through the PowerPoint. You're gonna see it look a little bit different tonight. I don't know if you remember, but last school year was the last school year that we had Galileo. And I forgot the new name, but Galileo as our assessment platform was last school year. And then we did an RFP and we awarded it to Renaissance DNA. And that was approved last spring for implementation this school year. So, with the new assessment platform comes new reports and new ways of looking at things. And so, we're still working on some of those reports right now. But I'll explain when we get to the slide exactly what you're looking at. Because this is going to look a little bit different. So, this is our third grade ELA standards percent correct. Usually, you saw before, like, a gradation of colors of proficiency. And that is a report that we can create. It just takes a little bit longer and it takes us a little bit more finagling to do. So, we, but this is an easier report for us to look at. And in fact, it's a report that teachers can use a little bit easier than just percent proficient. This report tells you what percentage of your students get the standards that are assessed correct. So, they know by standard which ones they mastered and which ones they didn't master. So, as a teacher, you could see that that would actually give you a little bit more data than just knowing who's minimally proficient, partially proficient, proficient, or highly proficient. So, this gives us a little bit more data. So, this is the rankings for third grade ELA. And then I'll just show you the rankings for each grade level. And you'll see the GSD 40 average in the middle. This is fourth grade ELA standards. Fifth grade. Sixth grade ELA standards. Seventh grade ELA standards. And finally, eighth grade ELA standards. So, we actually use this data a lot in preparation for not only end of semester or end of quarter, but also to prepare ourselves for AAS, AZPSI, I Ready Spring. We prepare ourselves and our students for those things. But it also helps us relook at our pacing guides and curricular documents for the next school year to tell us, are we missing anything? Are there gaps that we didn't know that existed a year ago that when we created it, now we're implementing it? Is there something different that needs to happen? So, it does help us influence those kinds of district-wide documents as well. Math, same kind of thing. You'll see the same kind of measures and graphs. So, this is third grade math standards. Looks like a chartreuse color this evening instead of green or yellow. We might need to work on that color. Chartreuse is a little strong. Fourth grade math. Fifth grade math standards. You'll notice our fifth grade ELA standard, um, results were similar. The graphs were higher with the fifth grade, too. And so, we look at that, too. Like, are they performing the same way than on AAS, that they perform on these assessments as well? Sixth grade math standards. And as you've heard Ms. Heidig say in other presentations, our upper grade math is where we really need to focus on and think about and work on and get more support for our students and maybe even teachers who just might, you know. I know if I were told that I needed to teach the class after Algebra I, like, Beginning Geometry, I'd be like, oh, my gosh, I need some help. So, I get that, and I do. And so, eighth grade math. Now is our I Ready diagnostic for the difference between fall and winter. You saw the fall one, last fall, obviously. And then we do it again in December. And what you're gonna be looking for, and what you should look for in our data, is more green at the top and less red at the bottom. Little more yellow is good, too, as long as it comes from the red. But it is definitely, and you'll see that in every grade level, every single grade level, the green got bigger and the red got smaller. So, you'll see that. So, good job, teachers and students and administration for supporting this work because you do see quite a difference in some grade levels, for sure. This is all grade levels altogether. Ten-point difference, more or less, in minimally proficient change in one quarter. Kindergarten looks a little bit different because, as you can imagine, in kindergarten, there's, there's, there's nothing below kindergarten. Other than, and I didn't mean that that way because there's obviously preschool, and you guys do a good job, but you don't take I Ready. So, that data doesn't go into this. But that, but the system doesn't go below.
Preschool do, they have data. They do their assessments, too.
Maybe just not I Ready data. So, that's what I meant. So, sorry, I corrected myself. I Ready first grade data, you can see a big change here. First grade is really, kindergarten and first grade, you'll see the most changes. Second grade data change, 10% change in the green, which is on or above grade level, which is, that's what the green means. It doesn't just mean grade level. It means on or above. Third grade, similar. Which is really helpful because this is the move on when reading grade that we really look at, especially towards the end of the school year. Fourth grade data. Fifth grade. So, you'll see this, you might be asking yourself, well, I saw the benchmark data look, you know, maybe the graphs looked a little different than this graph. But remember, there's a difference between proficiency levels, which is more or less what this is, and percent of standards correct, which was the other graph. So, we'll get more explicit about how to look at the graphs later on, once we play a little more in DNA. But there is a difference. Sixth grade. Seventh grade. And eighth grade. We take I Ready again at the beginning of May. And that is just another data point that we use to help make our decisions about what happens in the next school year. It also helps us with the move on when reading third graders. We do look at that data as well for them. So, just some next steps. Like I said, benchmarks do start. The writing one is next week. And then the reading and math is the week of parent-teacher conferences, which is in two weeks. We reflect, as I pointed out before, the first bullet, we reflect on our tights, what we're tight about in GSD every single year and the practices. And I think we're gonna come up with some ways to even solidify that even more and make sure that when we're focusing on our tights, that they're, we have clarity around them and that they're refined. And, and those are things that we're gonna be working on. And maybe even have a little less tights so that we can focus on the few really, really, really well. Continue the countdown inspire review. So, we call triage right now. So, the six weeks about before AAS, we go into triage mode to help our students make sure that they master the standards. And then right after spring break, for the most part, we have about 10 to 15 days before the majority start AAS to really figure out who needs the support, what is exactly that we can do to help them in 10 to 15 days to make them feel successful. Because we want to build the student efficacy so that when they do get in front of the computer to take AAS, that they really feel like they can, they can make it happen in that moment. And that's really, really important, that they don't feel like it's, that it's too much or overwhelmed by it. So, those are our next steps. I already mentioned, we're looking at the pacing guides again and using data to make those decisions. So, with that, I'll take any questions if you have any or any comments.
No, I, as someone who worked in the Peoria Public Schools, I worked with I Ready. So, I really like the, the fact that it's more student-led and allows teachers to have more time, like, one-on-one time with the students. And, I mean, I've seen the programs, at least from first grade up to third grade, what they do on there. So, it's cool seeing the progress from fall to winter. I like seeing those improvements. And, I mean, that's proof that, you know, we're doing something right. And it's, it's all thanks to the educators.
Yes, all educators pre-K8.
Any other questions or comments from the board? All right. Thank you, sir. Well done. Thank you for stepping in. Ms. Heidig, if you're watching, Sherry did okay.
Did you just call him Sherry?
Yes, I called him Sherry. No, Jerry, Jerry. No, I did not say Sherry. Stop putting words into their mouths. All right. Moving on in our agenda to future meetings and events. Ms. Sigata-Jones, what's coming up in the near future?
Yes, President Martinez, members of the board. So, next board meeting, March 13th, we'll do certified contract renewals will be brought. The medical, dental, vision, life, and midterm insurance disability insurance renewals will come. The employee assistance programs with the wellness and all that will come as well. I do want to say for the next board meeting, we'll bring those items. But again, as you recall, at the end of last board meeting, we stayed after and we did some photos of, to promote our wellness program and really our friend-to-benefit packet, and we did that on Instagram. And that's a big push for us with the wonderful benefits that our district has and the number of years that we've not had to increase premiums. So, Mr. Bergen, you were not here last week, but thank you for the work that you do. Again, board member Wilson and the work you do with the trust. And so, those are just huge benefits that we, we have. An incredible plan with our increasing premiums for our staff and still have wonderful coverage. So, that is something to celebrate. So, we did that post on, because February is, you know, Wellness Month. And so, we wanted to kick that off. And you look very good on Instagram with your Cheerios and everything. So, thank you for participating in that.
All right. Any comments on the future agenda items? All right. Moving on in our agenda to the summary of current events, starting with the superintendent report. Ms. Sigata-Jones?
Yes, President Martinez, members of the board. This week is Public Schools Week. So, thank you to staff, preschool staff, teachers. I see you here. Other staff members and principals, administrators, support staff. Public School Week, you know, we're so proud to be in public education and what we do. And thank you to everybody. Everybody works extremely hard. And so, we, we celebrate that. There's a great video we did on Instagram. Adriana put that together. So, thank you for doing that. Also, we had last Friday Challenger. Thank you, Mr. Hortsman, for hosting that for us. We had AYSO U.S. Women's National Team Soccer Clinic, where they selected schools across the state. We were selected and we could send students to that to participate in a clinic with, with that soccer organization. It was wonderful. It was a great afternoon for families that come out with their students. And so, we appreciate that support. We had Saturday, the district track meet. Thank you to the governing boards that were able to attend that. All the, I want to give a special thank you to John Moritz and all the physical education teachers and the work that they did. And then all the staff that volunteered and everybody that was there. It's just a wonderful event. It's gotten better every year. We have We really do want to let our new teachers know how much we appreciate and value them, and so it was nice to have that event and everybody to see their superpowers. Incredible. Then, right now, I want to announce, it's been out, read to the final four, so the top eight. It's read to the final four, and now they have the top eight, and we have Desert Spirit and Smith are in the top eight. So great. So we're hoping that, you know, that will continue. With that, also, we have recruiting going on right now, trying to hire and do, get those positions in. And then also, we're watching very carefully what is happening at the federal level. There's, you know, just a lot of changes that are happening. We don't know what's going to happen as far as federal funding, and we should know fairly quickly, but we've been watching that, and we'll make sure that we communicate all that out to people. Nothing has changed in the back since last time. I still do want to recognize it, because it's incredible artwork, if you haven't seen it. So thank you to Desert Garden. Desert Garden is here, and the work that they're doing with their kids, it's adorable. And Desert Spirit, thank you again for having that. And I know I announced it last time, but we always want to recognize, recognize for those who are new attending that. Other than that, that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you. I know we just met like two weeks ago, but it seems like there's been a lot that's happened over the past couple of weeks, so thank you for, for being so active with our district, Ms. Segada-Jones. So we'll start with our five board members here. We'll start down on the end with Ms. Bartels. What's been going on?
Well, all I can say is it's a lot easier to be like the fourth one in line for this, because I could just go ditto down the line. It has been an exciting last couple of weeks. We've had a lot of great events that we're having our students participate, the families are coming out to cheer them on, but as well as the, the support that we're giving to our community, to be the Market on the Move, or the Salvation Army, the food box distributions. So I know there's a lot of stuff on our calendar coming up, and I'm excited to go through and provide my list to the superintendent and Ms. Powell, as to what all of you are attending. But thank you all for everything that you do to help our, our kids and our community. I'll be engaged.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Wilson?
Well, the track and field event was probably one of the biggest ones I've seen here since I've, I've been. It was really well-attended, and the kids all had a great time, and there were, I understand there were parents there at seven o'clock in the morning, and so people were ready. And it's a beautiful day. It was just, you know, a, a great event. The new teacher event was also, the participation was really good. The food is always great, and it's just fun to see the teachers get all excited about winning awards. I think there were 50, did you have 50 awards this time? So, yeah, it was, it was good.
Spoiled.
Yeah, they got spoiled. And also, thank you, teachers, for the great work that you're doing, the, for the students, the benchmarks show the progress that they're making, and I'm really anxious to see Benchmark 3, because I know those are going to be really good as well. So just thanks to all of you.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Pimentel?
I guess I'll be the one to say ditto, ditto, ditto. Happy Public Schools Week. I, I preach to the choir here, we are all so into public schools, and I wish the rest of the world that wasn't, was. We have so many people that have gone on to do such wonderful things, and it's all because of our public schools and teachers, and everybody in this room, and everybody listening, and everybody not listening. But it, it's, it's important to everybody to realize exactly where you get your education. And I'm thankful and I'm grateful to be part of this GSD family, to know that, that they're still doing the good work that started so long ago. The new teacher celebration was amazing. This is a Sherry Dawn event, and, and if you haven't been, it's an event in itself, and, and we see the work that you do and that everybody does. And the color run, it was the first time I made that this year. I luckily did not get anything inside my truck, but it was all over me, and we have the pictures to prove it to some of the others, and Phil was a tie-dye hit, I'll tell you. And the assessments are amazing. It's, it's so great, as Board Member Hadamio said, to see the, the progress that's made from fall to winter, and let's just keep going and, and keep learning. And the final four reading, it was Desert Spirit and who else?
Sandy.
And Smith. That's, hey, keep going. Top eight? Let's go to one and two, and, or one and one. Have a great week.
Triple ditto. I don't know. Happy Public Schools Week, was it? Oh, nice. You know, as we all believe in here, we believe public schools are, you know, the reason why, you know, we have such a great city, a state. And I also want to thank the teachers that I see here, you know, I welcome you to come to more meetings. I encourage you. I love seeing more educators here, so it, it's great to see you guys show your faces and, you know, I always encourage public comments whenever necessary, even, even if it's against me, like it has happened in the past, so. But I'll pass the microphone now.
All right. Tons of stuff going on this week. Thank you for the presentation on the benchmarks. I, I liked the new way that the stats were presented with the percentage instead of it all being, it just like a scattering of, like a shotgun scattering of minimally proficient, middle, you know, proficient, highly proficient, I don't know. I like it was much easier to digest that way, so thank you very much for, for getting that together. It's great to see that the grind continues. I know everyone's looking at that, and they know what needs to happen. You're already well aware of what you need to do before we ever even see that report. I can guarantee it. So just keep working on that, and you, it will produce results. You just have to believe that it will produce results, because we've seen it happen year after year. So thank you for all your work on that. Had a great time at the track meet. If anything, my only suggestion was that the kids need to work on their trash talk, because it was pretty weak. Hearing them at the starting line chatting with each other, and it's all friendly, but I was talking to Dr. Peterson and Kurvaya, I said, maybe we should have some sort of workshop prior to the track meet to teach the kids the proper way to trash talk. He's shaking his head no. Maybe, maybe an after-school club, a mosaic trash talk, no? No? Okay. All right, then, moving on. Color run was a blast. My, my, my son, my youngest son, always has liked to go. It's one of the few events that he likes to go, even though he's like a junior in high school now. He still comes back and he does the color run, even though we just, we're now down to just color walking, and I'm totally cool with that. Phil had a great time. If you haven't seen Phil, he is my little black and white mini poodle. It took two, two, two loads of shampoo to get all the color out of his fur, and I wasn't able to get to him before he jumped up on my bed, and I had a large splotch of yellow color runs color on my bed. Ask me if I cleaned it off before I crawled into bed that night. I did not. I don't care. So that was fun. If you've been on Facebook or Instagram, you probably saw the Kidcasters. Very cool program. That was, that was really fun to see, and I am told that they were going to be playing these Kidcasters throughout the year, so make sure, I think it's ABC, ABC 15. So if you happen to want to watch the weather, other than seeing that it's going to be hot every day, and you go on there and see one of our Glendale kids on there doing a great job, so congratulations. And lastly, I want to thank, as, as, as part of Gusto, I want to thank our business partners for all the support they've been giving us. We have our annual golfing with Gusto event next week, where right now, we are on pace to more than clear all of our expenses for next school year, so that has been coming in a great help, so things like Just Because, things like Perfect Attendance Awards, things like the coffee trucks that come out, and anything the district asks is, they give us a call, and they're like, hey, can you help us with that? And like, absolutely, have no problem, and it's thanks to all those business partners that help support us and help support the district. So thank you very much to all of them, and thank you very much to all of our school district staff and all our school administrators helping out, is going to be helping out at that event. I look forward to having a great time and never actually touching a golf club, because I'll be running around like a crazy person. So, that being said, is there a motion to adjourn?
To adjourn.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Have a great evening, everybody. I'll see you next month.